Good evening. Welcome to Planning Commission Meeting. Could all stand for the Pledge of Legions, please?
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call. All that belong to the Commission present, Chris, welcome to the Commission.
Thank you.
Approval of agenda for tonight. Any additions or deletions, John?
No additions or deletions, but just wanted to note for folks in the audience that this is the public hearing component for this request. Anything that would go to the City Council still has to go to that City Council meeting, so this meeting tonight is not any finality for anything regarding any proposed ordinance amendments for this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion and second to approve generally, all in favor, saying we're saying aye.
Aye.
Approved with all present. Ordinance Amendment, Section 52.45 Mining and Extractive Uses. Notice of Public Hearing, the Wade Park Plan Commission will hold a public hearing at City Hall, 1913th Avenue North, 6:30 soon thereafter. On Monday, September 19th, 2022, to hear the following request. Requested the City of Wade Park to amend multiple sections of city ordinance, Section 52.45 Mining and Extractive Uses. Public hearing opened at 6:31.
Thank you, Chair Jansky. For those in the audience, this is obviously a bigger crowd than we usually get, so I'll do throws I can to kind of run through more line by line than we usually do of what's being proposed in an ordinance update this evening. Thought we'd start here. This is a map that's noting existing quarry and pit facilities within the city of Wade Park. This is something that, I apologize for the poor quality, had to be scanned, wasn't playing along the computer, but somebody else provided to our City Council at earlier work session, just to give an idea of current sites that are within the city. Obviously, you know, by and large is controlled by two sites that are longstanding, Hard Drives and Martin Marietta, but additional sites that have been approved in the recent years along Granite View Road, multiple sites, as well as an area on intersection of County Road 121 and County Road 138. That one is a gravel pit operation, that has started operations the last year, year and a half, and has additional future phases. So it gives an idea of the current property in the city that's under either an older conditional use permit or interim use permit for current quarry or extractive use operations. This request has been made by city staff regarding these proposed amendments due to kind of an unexpected and sudden influx of applications for mining and extract use interim use permits within the last several years. We really wanted just to take a step back and kind of take a look at, you know, what's driving this and are there ways to better consider or address kind of what's been happening. We have had some requests and feedback from residents, some of which are here tonight, some of which aren't, regarding these different operations and their proposals. And we undertook a moratorium in the fall of 2021 to allow some time to review the existing ordinance and consider modifications, including the option to perhaps remove allowance for new approvals entirely. In the last several months, I've taken a kind of a hard look at that. We've received numerous contacts from surrounding property owners, similar sorts of questions on some of these proposals. I did kind of weigh some of the other ordinances from area cities and presented a memo of options for consideration to the City Council at a previous work session. Of those, of course, we consider the option of we can leave the ordinance alone, call it good, and keep doing the things the way we've been doing. We could remove the option for any new interim use permits entirely, or we can go somewhere in between. And my preferred option was that third option, somewhere in between, to try and strike a balance between property owners and that are there, property owners that are invested in their residences, as well as property owners that could potentially benefit from some level of mining quarry opportunities. I think if you, if you asked me this question earlier in the year when I was deeper into this, my, my take would have been we should get rid of it entirely because it's been difficult. It's, it's been frankly kind of a headache for us sometimes. But I think in considering, I think that was, as I told the City Council, I think that was somewhat short sighted too. You know, if we get rid of it entirely, we could remove some options that could become interesting projects. And that was where the City Council landed as far as wanting to kind of keep options open with some modifications being proposed, but really also wanting some more firm plans that if we allow for something that, we'd really like to have it be something that fosters long-term development of recreational opportunities, something besides just vacant land or a big hole in the ground. I have had contact with Stearns County Parks Department and the DNR staff regarding potential changes. That was driven as they had reached out last year on a particular application after learning of it. We, obviously, we do require notices for things that are, you know, within certain distances, but they don't always get where they're supposed to go. It's just organizations are large and they don't always get every letter that's sent. And I think any government organizations in that same boat unfortunately sometimes. But we did work with them and given the proximity of a lot of these properties that are or may be interested to Quarry Park. You know, Quarry Park is a huge recreational destination, home to some science and natural areas that are of concern to the DNR, so we want to handle it, you know, obviously kind of gently and take that into consideration. I'll come back to that map. My belief was that the proposed amendments would aid significantly in addressing some repeated concerns that have come up regarding extractive uses, and I'll go through them as we go through the ordinance here. Almost all of the proposals were driven in response to some things that have come up, sometimes once, sometimes a number of times. Trying to basically alleviate option, or excuse me, alleviate concerns. Give some more comfort with applications as they're made, allow us to do a more thorough, a better review, and put more appropriate conditions. The more, the more information we have as part of a proposal, the better our recommendations can be, and the better we can make any approvals fit with a neighboring, neighboring residents that, that have to live next to such operations. Do think that there's ways they can coexist, but frankly, I don't think our current ordinance is doing a good enough job at making that happen. I would note that no matter what ordinances we may pass or not pass, it's likely that if proposals continue in, under the ordinance as it stands, we may experience aspects that we can't always account for under the, either an updated ordinance or the existing one. And city staff and appointed elected officials will still have to continue to address those on a case-by-case basis as the best we can. With extractive use type requests, there's a lot of variables that can be considered, and one site can be entirely different than another as far as the impacts that may or may not have to neighboring property owners. I'm not able to project how many more mining projects we may, we may see. It could be zero, and this might all be for nothing, but we anticipate that there's at least some interest or could potentially be some future interest in the community, particularly along the Granite View Road area where it seems to be some valuable resources that could potentially be taken out. The proposed limitations would place some additional limits on, on extractive uses. Obviously, the, a particular notice of proposed 1,000-foot buffer from Stearns County property associated with Quarry Park and/or established scientific and natural areas. That's why, this is a kind of a quickly generated map, but gives an idea. The property in purple is either Quarry Park or Stearns County property. Plus the proposed 1,000-foot buffer, the parcels that are located or, excuse me, depicted in the kind of the red hue, those would be properties that would be impacted to some degree by that buffer. As you can see, particularly along the Granite View stretch, something like the Lees Meyer property to the north here, 1,000-foot buffer would stretch and kind of take maybe a third of it, but leave some other options available. Also proposing some setback aspects that could perhaps make a project like this, for example, a more amenable to residents that are invested in a pretty dense neighborhood here on Heritage Drive vicinity. Going down, you can see there's, there's various impacts to various parcels, but that would be a baseline 1,000-foot buffer from Quarry Park or any established scientific and natural areas. Again, I would note that given the importance of Quarry Park as an area, regional and statewide recreational and natural area destination, I do think it's worthy of the consideration of additional attention to the mitigative impacts. I don't think we can dismiss either that Quarry Park is named Quarry Park because it was made from quarries. I know it gets brought up sometimes, and you know, that's, it's 100% true. You know, it, it has, it's there because of the history of mining, so I don't make any attempt to try and cover up that. I know the irony of we're trying to limit perhaps mining in the vicinity of Quarry Park, but frankly, it's what it is now and what it was are two distinctly different things. I do believe that a buffer from Quarry Park properties will have impacts on adjacent properties that may consider quarry mining projects. There's not really any dispute about that. But given the size of the parcels impacted, in most cases, they will retain at least some opportunity. I'll run through the, the ordinance here as well. If you want me to speed up or slow down, let me know, but I'm just going to kind of hit the highlights here. While proposing updates to the ordinance, I did make several housekeeping sort of changes as far as some middle requirements, going from 10 paper copies to PDF copies, things we've been trying to take an opportunity to get with the times essentially as we make changes to things. I don't need a pile of maps when I can just get it sent over in an email. So new language is noted in italic underline for reference, and removed language is noted in strike through. Frankly, there's really not a lot of removed language in, in the ordinance. Most of it is additions. I felt that the ordinance, as it was written, didn't really necessitate being thrown out entirely. The bones are pretty good and in line with some others in the area, but felt that the additions could, could benefit and make for stronger applications and give us a better ammunition to do our review and keep our state agencies happy with regulatory aspects. Also of note here, I didn't bring this up yet, but subdivision three B, we would propose limiting new interim use permits granted, established after October 31st, 2022. That was set because the, at least the anticipated City Council review was set for next Monday. That's subject to change, and this could change accordingly too if it ends up being needed. Would be limited to an initial term of no more than five years and no more than one five-year renewal term, subject to City Council approval. And that remove, item C, renewals for any interim use permit for mining operations established prior to October 31st, 2022 are limited to no more than a single five-year renewal term beyond the scope of the original permit approval, subject to City Council approval. I think what we've seen, especially along Granite View, is there's a demand and perhaps some, some success with some of these projects that are short-term in nature. I don't think the city really necessarily wants to rule those, oh, they could be beneficial for everybody. You know, a landlord can make some money, or a mining firm can, can make some profit, and we can end up with something perhaps better in the end. The City Council approval from the interim use permit that was for the MTL Partners' property, which Johnson Materials, was a example of that. We view that as kind of a case study. It's a rare situation that could work beneficial for everybody, and we really haven't had any complaints about that. But as far as looking how many projects we can bear and for how long, we thought it was time to, you know, put some term limits on that. Item D, all reclamation plans shall demonstrate increased opportunities for long-term growth and development of the community or utilization of the reclamation area as a public resource. Preference for interim use permits and renewals will be granted to proposals that demonstrate greater opportunities for long-term growth and higher quality development upon the property upon reclamation activities. Item E, all new requests for interim use permits shall require notification of property owners within a radius of 2,500 feet of the property upon which the proposed mining operation is located. This is, this is one that comes up time and time again. The standard for usual conditional use permit or an interim use permit type request is 350, 400 feet. That doesn't get as far as it needs to. These parcels, when we're dealing in parcels of this nature, they're very large. 350 feet will only get us to the neighboring parcels. A mining or a quarry operation or a pit operation is going to have potential impacts, noise, visibility, beyond that. I think it's reasonable to, to give the neighboring property owners a little further away, at least a chance to weigh in. Obviously, you know, we, we publish a public hearing, but unless you get it in the mail, you're sometimes not likely to get attention. And we hear a lot, how come I didn't get a notice in the mail? And then we have to outline the, you know, this is how far we send, and the question becomes that, that's crazy. Why didn't I get further than that? This is a, this is a gravel pit. This is a mine. And I don't think it's unreasonable request, you know, just given the scale and the scope of properties involved. Renewal of interim use permit changes that from 600 to 2,500 feet as well. Name and address as part of the application requirements, and written permission from property owners to pursue the request. Again, a little house cleaning, housekeeping item. It's usually implied you have permission, but you may be surprised how often we get applications for things that the actual owner of the property has no idea what's going on. Shouldn't be the case, but it does happen. Item E, moving to full-size map and PDF copies, again, housekeeping, cleaning up a little improvement there. Item eight, or excuse me, Section Three End Use Plan, item C. Adding details regarding options for long-term use and development upon the property that would be supported or enhanced by end use plan. That's something that, again, was at the suggestion and kind of direction of the, of the City Council as part of their, excuse me, cursory review discussion. Item H reflects back to that as well, a proposed land use and development plan to be implemented following the conclusion of the mining operation. That demonstrates, adding, excuse me, adding, that demonstrates increased opportunities for long-term growth and development of the site and community or utilization of the reclamation area as a public resource. Adding item M, a groundwater, requiring a groundwater impact study completed by a certified professional hydrologist that denotes potential impacts of proposed operation to groundwater supplies to surrounding properties. Again, a question that's come up repeatedly. I think it has come up every time we've, we've reviewed a proposal or a request for interim use permit. Part of that is handled at the state level by de-watering permits through the DNR, but the intent is to go a little bit above and beyond that so that we have it in our hands, that as part of our review at the city level. Probably perhaps the same information can be utilized for both, but, you know, when we're looking at de-watering and putting a big pond in, especially given the kind of the drought years we've had, I think it's not unreasonable for a neighboring property owner to question the impacts that could have to their, to their water supply. Again, this lets us make a more thorough review and consideration, and addresses questions we, we get repeatedly. Item N, a plan regarding how the applicant intends to respond and mitigate any instances of negative groundwater impacts to surrounding properties, including but not limited to impacts to private wells and water supplies. Plan shall demonstrate that all associated costs will be borne by applicant should negative well impacts be experienced by surrounding property owners during the term of the interim use permit and within one year of completed reclamation activities. Item P, an area is found by the city or the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources to be a potential concern with regards to native wildlife and/or vegetation upon the subject property or nearby properties. An inventory and/or study of such species and potential impacts to them may be required to standards set forth by the city of Wade Park and/or Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, including potential requirement for environmental assessment worksheet and, if needed, environmental impact statement. The intent there is to help align the city's ordinance with state requirements and overarching state regulatory aspects. Q, information that demonstrates proposal compliance with all applicable state of Minnesota statutes, standards, and requirements regarding mining, quarrying, and extractive uses. And this is, this is a case where we, you know, there's different, different entities, the state, the county, the DNR, the city may have different regulatory requirements. I want to see what they're seeing as part of, as part of a submittal. That's what I'm, what I'm getting at with this. I don't want them to come back and, at some point, and say you didn't get A, B, or C, and now it's on you. S, failure to submit all information above results in application being deemed incomplete and not being accepted for processing or consideration by the city. This is already, this is already a city aspect, but we find that putting it in the ordinance itself is generally helpful for, for consideration, particularly when you may be giving out this information as a packet to someone that's not familiar with local ordinances. Getting into subdivision five setbacks. Changing processing of minerals should not be conducted closer than 100 feet to the property line or 1,000 feet, upping it from 500 to 1,000 from a residential or commercial structure on adjacent properties. My intent here is to provide some relief to property owners that are on small parcels, perhaps in the Granite View Road area especially. We have a number of parcels that are residences. They're not nearly as large as some of the other, the larger farms where you could see mining requests, trying to give them some additional buffer that, you know, if this is something that we move forward, that they don't have to necessarily be that close and to an operation. You know, they've, these people have an investment. They've oftentimes sought out that, that kind of speed, that kind of semi-rural lifestyle. They like being in town, but they like having a little bit of space. I know if I were the owner, I'd, I'd be reluctant to have something that close to me, so this is something to, you know, help, give some relief there. Mining operations should not be conducted closer than 200, upping to 750 feet from any residence or residential zoning classification boundary existing on the approval date of the, of the interim use permit. Again, intent is to, is where this might be a case, give a little bit more space to work with.
Excuse me, John. Doesn't A and B conflict? Aren't A and B saying the same thing with two different numbers?
A and B, A deals with, with the structures themselves. B has to do with the zoning district. B is less likely to be an aspect, except in a case where something like the northernmost Lees Meyer property, where it abuts the residential zoning district of Heritage Point area, that's where that one would apply. I'd expect in most cases, it's more likely to be A. B, again, stretching back to the Quarry Park aspect, mining operations shall be conducted no closer than 1,000 feet from any property under ownership or leasehold agreement of Stearns County and utilized as part of Quarry Park or established as a scientific and natural area by the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, unless formal exception or variance is granted by Stearns County. This is something that, that came up during discussion, that Stearns County staff was amenable to having the option to vary from those standards. I know it's not necessarily the, the norm to put it on another agency to, to make that call, but given it's, it's the property that they have the interest in, that's their control, thought to put the onus on them in case where it's, it's requested makes more sense. Item D, mining operations shall not be undertaken on any property that is in its entirety or portion thereof, designated as a scientific and natural area by the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. Item E, multiple and/or separate mining operations located on the same or contiguous parcels may be treated and considered as a single operation for regulatory purposes. Again, this is something that's already factored in under, under state level, but putting it in ordinance could prove to be helpful, just as a heads up for anyone that's considering an operation. You know, if we get multiple operations that come in on the same parcel or adjacent parcels, particularly if they're from a same, a same applicant, they can all of a sudden jump into another category that, that requires more intensive review and requirements from, from a state level. Letter, or excuse me, getting into performance standards, going down to item I. Screening barrier sufficient to substantially shield mining operations from the view of adjacent properties year-round shall be required between mining operations and adjacent properties. The, the new language would be barrier shall be a minimum of 15 feet above grade. An applicant bears responsibility for submittal or survey or other documentation to establish base grade elevation. And adding that proposed screening treatments shall be approved by a city, that, that's not new, but and may be reduced or eliminated on portions of property of limited or no impact to adjacent properties with approval of adjacent property owner in the city. What we have is, you know, we get into cases where it's, it's subjective, you know, how high is high enough? I, I don't think it's high enough. You think it's high enough, and unless it's, we have a written number, it's, it's tough to, to, to really specify. And I would rather put it in the ordinance than have it be on a case-by-case situation as far as an actual set height. I do think it's reasonable to consider the option to reduce or eliminate to there, anything that could go forward ever. There's likely to be instances where, you know, it's probably a, there's going to be a side that abuts something that's wide open or deeply wooded, or some case where it may not make sense to require to put a berm there. If the adjacent property owner is okay with it because of the natural features or some other aspect kind of does the job for it, I would be okay foregoing that, but that would be a case-by-case basis that we'd sort out as part of a, you know, application and review. It just gives us a little more leeway to do that. If the, if it's undertaken as written right now, technically, you're supposed to have a berm around the whole thing regardless of if there's anybody within 100 miles of that, you know, one side or another. Going down to K, hours of operation. In adding language that says in no event shall any crushing activities be undertaken at any times between the hours of 4:00 PM and 9:00 AM, nor any Saturday or Sunday, with additional restrictions being placed on projects on an individual basis based on location and potential impacts to surrounding properties. This is just really, the intent here is to set a baseline. You know, we, we have a project out right now that has caused some concerns with neighbors as far as, you know, crushing activities. Caused some concerns with neighbors as far as, you know, crushing activities. Thinking that setting an, an actual time in, in ordinance rather than starting it on, reviewing it case by case would be helpful, I don't. I would assume nine AM to four PM would, would not be unreasonable, but that, you know, if someone feels otherwise, they can comment on the public hearing component. Item L, crushing of granite unless explicitly approved as part of interim use permit is prohibited. Again, driven by a, a specific project that. We felt it would be beneficial to put it in ordinance, just so, just so it's clear and any review, you know, we'd be looking for, you know, specifically what materials aren't being. Proposed for activities, what, what's being crushed, what's not. Granite is referenced specifically because the granite of crush, uh, crushing of granite is generally much, much louder than, you know, crushing of gravel or concrete or those sorts of things, so. Could be more of a, a issue for neighbors. And those, that really is the sum of the, the proposal there. Now I will note, you have two letters or documents in front of you, one, one of which was submitted on behalf of a, a property owner. And or leasehold interest there from one of the. Area companies and another one from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. They both offer kind of a different take, we, I distributed the, the one this morning, actually. You, you were sent a copy from the attorney's office on, on the one from the landowner or. Leasehold, leasehold interest. That was emailed to you today as well as the city council members, the DNR one just came late today, so I didn't have time to email that to you, I apologize, but wanted to make a cop, a copy available. They have different takes on ordinances. I'll leave them free to peruse. They can be addressed at public comments, but the DNR specifically did ask that I, I share. A little bit with their letter on their behalf since they couldn't have a representative. The DNR supports the modification of the ordinance, but they're suggesting that. We may want to take additional steps to perhaps firm it up even further and perhaps. Extend moratorium for a little bit to try and work on that. They note granite, granite outcrop features, plant communities and associated species are incredibly rare and in danger of being exterminated from the state. They have identified sites of biodiversity significance in the vicinity of the sci- scientific and natural areas. Sites of biodiversity significance have varying levels of native biodiversity are ranked based on the relative significance of the biodiversity at a restoration. Upland habitat does not have the same protection as wetlands in Minnesota, and so it is often up to local governments to protect these types of sites from being. Once granite has been removed from the site, the habitat has lost forever and cannot be restored. They do have some suggestions, as you may see, I won't read the, the whole letter for sake of, of brevity here, but they do have some suggestions to. Further incorporate or, or kind of modify the ordinance language to. Specific environmental review statutes or rules. As well as referencing the. Minnesota Environmental Policy Act, excuse me. Some of their, the regulatory aspects that we. The intent of the ordinance was to kind of cover it in broad strokes, but they're suggesting, suggest, suggesting that they be more specifically called out in ordinance. As well as the aspects regarding the EAW and EIS for. Larger or multiple projects or phased projects that, that start to broach into that category. And in, in closing, they requested that. As part of any applications that may come in the future, that, that their staff is. Directly made advised of, of any proposals. So you do have some options in front of you tonight, you know, I'd certainly take the comments for public hearing, I'm sure there's folks here that are. Took the time and, and want to be heard, so we'll certainly accommodate that. But you could. You could, as far as options, you could recommend approval of the ordinance amendments as presented. You could discuss modifications, you could deny. Or you could also look at tabling, those are the standard options that, that we have before you. So in this, in this case, rather than make a, a formal recommendation, I think we, my preference would to be. Listen to, to the public and see what comments we have and, and kind of take it from there as far as what next, next steps may be. Just knowing that we have a lot of interest in that, the comments before you and those documents were, were just received today, so we haven't necessarily had a lot of time to digest my, myself or, or you especially.
Hey, thank you for the background, John, this is a public hearing, would anybody like to come up to the podium, state your name and address and. Your concerns?
Good evening, my name is Tom Ardolph and I'm here with my wife, Suzy Ardolph, and our address is two nine nine two County Road one thirty seven. We live, our property is directly west of the SNA DNR area. Since I've only been here thirty years, anybody, you know, anybody that should be fifty years, it would be the old Tony Filipsek property, so. But I thank you first for carefully listening and considering my concerns here today. That frankly, I feel as a loyal, proud Wade Park citizen, it's actually. Disheartening actually to have to come and speak with you about this ordinance here tonight. The proposed ordinance is easily the biggest demonstration of government overreach that I've ever seen in my decades as a Wade Park citizen. Let's start with the most fundamental rights that I am granted. From the US Constitution, because the truth is that the founders were concerned about a range of human values, but property rights were high on their list. The Constitution, the Bill of Rights protect a property in many ways predominantly in the Fifth Amendment, which one prevented any person from being deprived. Of their property without due process of law. And two required compensation when property was taken for public use, because that's what effectively this ordinance does to us. I believe a good example that parallels this proposed ordinance is, what this proposed ordinance is trying to do to us. Which is to take away the effective use of our property is when MNDOT has the actual need to use or have access to private property owners' land. Note, this is about an express need by MNDOT, not by a desire by one non-citizen entity, that is the DNR SNA in this proposed ordinance. Let me read to you just a small portion of the DOT statutes. Efforts will be made first to acquire your property through the direct purchase procedure. Direct purchase means a state representative will contact you in an attempt to purchase the property based on the estimated market value provided from an appraisal. In certain cases, the state will not need to purchase the actual property, but you know what, they will purchase certain rights, such as an easement. And that's the end of the DNR, or the DOT policy. So I want to tell you about some difficulties that we have recently with the city. I want to let you, the planning commission, and actually some of my fellow landowners here in the room here to know that. We've had two realistic uses for this piece of land, that it's filled with woods and granite. One is to mine it, and the other is for it to become part of the SNA. We've offered to sell the land to the DNR SNA, and I'm sure you can wholeheartedly agree that we should be able to sell it to them for fair market value. That is the appraised price. What you likely do not know is that we have approached the city four times in the past few years when we had prospects to buy our land. Two were for different solar projects when the city put a kibosh on that, ordinances. One was to allow us to build houses on the tillable, buildable portion, but we were told that it was mandated that we put in city services. And the cost for that is so astronomical that it was out of the question, so that opportunity vanished. And we had an auto transport business willing to write us a check to buy land, and we were told that idea would not even be presented to the city council. Today, we are dealing with the most unbillable portion, but one that has minerals and is adjacent to the park. We live in Wade Park and one of our key assets is rock. And we happen to own one of the very mineable areas, and here we are yet again, for the fifth time, being stymied by the city. So let's evaluate the takeover of our property by the DNR SNA with this proposed ordinance. The DNR owns hundreds and hundreds of acres. If they want to have a buffer to ensure whatever they want with their, with their property, you know what, then they can choose to establish a thousand foot boundary inside their property line. Doesn't that make sense? The fairest and the only rational solution? So let's consider the opposite for just a moment. Can I have the right to stop them from doing anything on their property at a distance that I choose? That seems fair, doesn't it, but I bet they would see that as unfair. Isn't that a novel but fair, practical idea, that they, they create their own thousand foot buffer on their own land? Or there's a solution, like I said, they can buy it at fair market value. Indeed, we have had that conversation with them and they can do it. If you pass this thousand foot ordinance that is impractical, unfair, and seemingly even unconstitutional. All you do is treat us, Tom and Suzy Ardolph unfairly and inequitably, and force us to pay the price of reduced land value if they indeed would even make an offer. But let me share with you, the planning commission, what has transpired over the past several months regarding this ordinance, which is actually really troubling. As the ordinance process progressed, we asked to be part of the process. We were rebuffed, no way to participate. But look at what happened. The city refused to work with the citizen and landowner, but instead colluded with a governmental agency so that we would never be able to have mining on our land. Let me quote you from page one in the background. Staff has also been in contact with both Stearns County Parks Department staff and Minnesota DNR staff regarding potential changes. Staff has received support from Stearns County Parks Department as well as their park commission who reviewed the same material provided to the city council for consideration. So why did this take place and we were left out? Bottom line, if the park wants it to not be mined, buy it. And buy it at market price, not at a price determined by intergovernmental body collusion. Take a look at the potential drawbacks to the ordinance. You have four bullet points that are negative aspects of this ordinance. Those four drawbacks need to be addressed before this or any ordinance is passed. It could affect future residences built on our land, and that may be close to any mining, but well, let us deal with that. That's how democracy, capitalism and freedom to own property works. And it seems inconceivable that realistic planning, things like berms, dust control, things like that, wouldn't ensure the integrity of Corey Park. Without a thousand foot buffer on land we own, just like it does in many other mining communities. And can I say it one more time? If they don't want it to be mined, buy it from us at fair market price. So in closing, let me suggest a better way to write this ordinance, one that I know worked when the oil and gas industry and the government went head to head to write safety statutes. What they did is brought in all the parties affected by the rules. They brought them together, in this case, that means all the landowners, the mi- the park, mining experts. Right now, you are writing mining ordinances without any knowledge of mining. That's simply crazy. Let's bring this down to earth and be fair to everyone. Right now, it's totally one-sided, and this ordinance needs to be sent back to the drawing board and embrace everyone fairly. And I'd also want to let you know that one of my neighboring landlords, Gary Zabinski, was planning on being here, so he'd have more people in the room, but his daughter got sick, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to come up and give their concerns for or against, state your name and.
Members of the commission, my name's Adam Ripple, rank in the offices, I don't know if, I assume that letter referenced was the one I submitted. I do have copies if the commission would like so. I'm here on behalf of Jeff and Lori Johnson, they're entities, they're both property owners and operators of mining operations. They're business owners here in Wade Park. I'm not going to get into the details of the concerns that we have with specific provisions of the ordinance. Hopefully that's in the letter, and I am happy to take questions if the commission has had an opportunity to read that letter. What I'm asking for on behalf of the Johnsons tonight is that the city. Take a timeout. I'm hearing that there are concerns about the current regulations of mining activities here in the city. We've not had an opportunity to meaningfully understand what those are, the background materials don't say where the current regulations fall short. We'd like that opportunity to understand that and engage with the city. Again, Jeff and Lori are property owners, they're mining operators. They have a lot at stake at, at what the city does here. And so if the city's saying the pendulum was way too few regulations, your proposed ordinance is, I mean, the pendulum is now way on the other side of. Being so restrictive that it effectually prevents any kind of, of mining. And there's got to be someplace between those two extremes. So we would like for the planning commission to recommend. Tabling of the consideration of these ordinance revisions. Extension of your moratorium or the adoption of a new moratorium, whatever it takes to provide more time. And then have a meaningful discussion with the people that this ordinance impacts. Hear both sides of, of concerns, folks who have concerns with mining and those folks who, you know, they pay their bills by ensuring that mining continues, so. I know Jeff and Lori have some comments to that effect, but bottom line is, we request that you table this and have discussion, there's, there's no. There's no rush to proceed with amendments. Mining activity is going to essentially come to a standstill here very soon with the weather. Take that opportunity over the winter to engage, have meaningful discussion and, and look at this. Through not just one set of eyes, but the eyes of the folks who it's going to impact the most.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Greg Mick and my wife and I, we live at twenty-three seventy-five Granite View Road, and our land is involved, Jeff and I are involved in this, we're in that purple area there, and it's been in our family for over a hundred years. And we have an opportunity to do something with it, granite outcroppings are all over and you can't, how are you going to put city services through that stuff? And this is a resource that's needed. And what else can you do with it? And amen to everything you said, I'm telling you, it's true. Where were we, why weren't we talk, involved with this thousand foot buffer zone is ridiculous, I mean, and. We're the owners out there, not, not, not the park, and, and they're dictating what's going on and something's not right. That's all I got to say.
Good evening, Ralph Fedor, two three three seven Granite View Road. I would like to take you through the process a little bit that we've gone through here. On July twentieth of two thousand and twenty-one, the city of Wade Park. Granted and approved a permit to conduct a mining operation on our property. And a series of processes were then set in place, and here we go. First, we had a survey conducted to identify any wetlands that might be on the property. That had to be verified by another survey conducted by the DNR. The Army Corps of Engineers then became involved and had to look at the project and then signed off on the project. Then a botanist got involved here, and our property needed to be searched for rare and exotic plants that might be endangered by any process. So at this point, you're kind of asking yourself, what else can happen? And as they say on TV, but wait, there's more. Three archaeologists are then brought to our property. And their charge is to search the property for evidence of prehistoric civilizations that may have lived on that property. So they came and it was kind of entertaining, you know, I've never seen an archaeologist work before, but they dug these little holes and they extracted the dirt and they sifted it. Looking for tools and arrowheads or whatever else might be there. And surprise, surprise, none were found. And, uh, surprise, surprise, none were found. Then there was a wetland, um, replacement plan that had to be put in place, and that was done. Now, all of these actions spanned the space of about a year. Uh, it moved at the pace of a tortoise until after a meeting, uh, with the environmental services people on September 14th of 2022. Then we sort of shifted to an SR-71 as the speed, then at which was, at which things would move. And within 48 hours, we had a very comprehensive plan, which we've been looking at here. And this, from my perspective, all occurred with no involvement of the landowners involved. I received no notification that there was going to be this meeting, but here we are. And I, I, you know, I wonder, is this, is this the sort of thing we do in secret? Do we try to sneak things through like that? I don't think you gentlemen have any intention of doing that, but it's been sort of thrust upon you and put in your lap, and our lap. And what is particularly alarming to me here is the proposed drastic change in the setback rules, particularly as they apply to Quarry Park. Now, I, I fully support the park, the personnel, and the work that they do there. You know, they do a nice job, and they're dedicated people. But a 1,000-foot setback? I mean, where is the pre-existing standard for that? And it's not only the setback that goes around the park, it's a 1,000 setback on each side of the road that goes to Quarry Park. So now you have this 2,000-foot swath of land that is, what, is it, in essence, land-grabbing or taking? You know, where's the precedence for that? How do you justify that? And we're imposing this on people who, if it weren't for them, Quarry Park would not be what it is. You know, my neighbor said there's three generations or whatever of his family there, and there's others there, too, that are involved with this. And these people are not afforded any, even any communication to speak with people like you or the people in the DNR, to have a little input about what's going on. If the hours of operation proposed were imposed on a business or a farmer, could you exist? Could you run your combine in those restricted hours? Would your cows, you know, fit into that? So mining is a business like anything else. They need to have an appropriate hours of operation where they can do their business. So, here we are. We've got a lot of frustration, you know? You can hear it coming out here. And, um, anxiety's boiling over, and I think maybe it's time we take a deep breath. And what we do is we talk to each other for a change. Don't lock people out of this conversation. Let us use conversation to find some common ground. Let's use our intellect and our imagination to see what can be, instead of just trying to preserve what is. We're moving into analysis paralysis here with all of this, you know? How can you make a decision based on all of this stuff tonight? So what have other communities done? How's it worked elsewhere? Let me take you to Chisholm, Minnesota, mining town. And what they did, working with the mining industry and the population, they built the largest museum in the state of Minnesota outside of the Twin Cities, this town of 5,000 people. They worked together, and they did that, and they communicated with each other. Go next door to Crosby-Irington, where they established recreation areas, bike trails, and so forth through the old mining pits there. And they built fences. On this side of the fence, that's the property owners. On this side of the fence, that's the park and recreation area. They've got a good fence, and they're good neighbors. They don't reach across the fence into other people's business. Or we could go to Tower Sudan. They've got the biggest, one of the biggest holes in North America there, a mine shaft that goes down 2,300 and some feet. So what do you do with that? Well, they used their imagination, and they thought about it a little bit, and they said, you know, I bet the University of Minnesota might be able to do something here. So they brought in a laboratory that detects particles coming from the stars that are light-years away from Earth, and that 2,000 feet of land above them is the filter that filters out all the crud that they don't want to listen to. And we learned a lot from that. They also put a cryogenics lab there where, you probably don't know this, but the coldest place on Earth is in Minnesota, the bottom of that mine. There are a fraction of a degree above absolute zero down there. So they use this as research, but it's done through co-operation, and it's a result of the mining industry. So, the St. Cloud Times article that was written after the granting of our permit said something about a reference to a possible nature center on this property. And things like that are possible, but we need to be talking to each other about this. We don't need to be going into our little corners, deciding what we're going to do to try to screw the other side. And I get the feeling that's what's going on here. It seems that way, you know? Are the actions that are taken, are they arbitrary and capricious? Are there intent to take a regulation, put it in place today, and then make it, make it affect something that happened two years ago? If I go fishing, and I catch 10 sunfish two years ago, and you come up to me today and you say, you know, the limit is five sunfish, you caught 10 two years ago, you have to go to jail. That's kind of how I feel this is going. So we need to talk to each other. We need to reestablish some public trust, and we need to show a little respect for each other. My concerns, again, are changing a law and applying it to conditions that occurred in the past, unrealistic setback proposals, restrictions that eclipse common sense and decency in respect of your neighbor, and a process that seems to be set up in an adversarial way, rather than encouraging us to talk to each other and find some common ground and things that will benefit the individual, the community, and the city of Wake Park. I think there is a win-win-win situation out there, but we're going to have to come together and talk to each other, talk to each other, to find that. Gentlemen, I think what we need to do is switch to a mode of openness, being realistic, having real and honest communications with each other, and giving all of us the respect that everyone deserves. Thank you.
Anybody else like to make a comment or statement?
Good evening, commissioners. Ben Anderson, Stearns County Parks Director. I'll give the park address, 1802 County Road 137, Wake Park. Uh, my name, like I said, is Ben Anderson. I'm the Stearns County Parks Director, and I'm here on behalf of the County Parks Department and the Stearns County Parks Commission. I want to thank city staff, the planning commission, and the city council for the opportunity to provide feedback on the proposed ordinance amendments to the city's mining and extractive uses, section 52.45. The Stearns County Parks Department's mission is to provide natural resource-oriented parks and outdoor recreational opportunities that enhance the quality of life of the Stearns County residents through physical fitness, community building, and the economic vitality. Our motto is enhancing quality of life while preserving our natural treasures. As Quarry Park and Nature Preserve and the SNA sits within the expanding urban area, we believe that keeping high-quality natural areas protected is very important, not only to the health and well-being of the residents of the city of Wake Park and Stearns County, but also for the persistence and the protection of a variety of animal, plant, and ecologically significant habitat, habitats, some of which are rare, threatened, and/or species of special concern. High-quality natural areas benefit people's mental and physical health, and in the face of declining health outcomes nationally, parks, trails, and outdoor recreation activities have become even more important. Connecting people with the opportunities to stay active and relaxed in high-quality natural areas is a key piece to improving the public's health. Last fall, the county park commission, I, and others, expressed concern with the recent increase of proposed and approved mining extractive use permits that are located either directly adjacent to or veer, very near Quarry Park and Nature Preserve. Quarry Park and Nature Preserve is a 683-acre natural resource-based park that offers historical and recreational opportunities, such as, but not limited to, swimming, historical quarrying demos, along with exhibits and artifacts. We recognize that the history of mining is what created the park and this great natural resource that's in our community. It also offers opportunities for fishing that wouldn't be there without the quarrying or the mining activity. We recognize that. Scuba diving, the same, rock climbing, the same, hiking and nature viewing opportunities that appeals to not only local residents, but regional, national, and international visitors. Quarry Park and Nature Preserve sees over 100,000 visitors annually and is a tremendous asset to this community. The Stearns, the Stearns County Parks Commission has discussed the city of Wake Park's mining extractive use ordinance updates and its considerations. As much as the commission and the Parks Department would rather not see mining adjacent to the park and, and the nature preserve, there is an understanding of the possible need. The Stearns County Parks Department and the Park Commission has the following comments. We support the increase, we support increasing the public notice radius for the interim, interim use permits to a larger area. We support limiting the hours, the days of operation for crushing activities. As proposed, the maximum crushing time should be set for no more than Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., with the potential for the reduction based on individual permit review and input from the neighbors. Think about when people are out using our parks. It's after work, it's before work. That's the times when people want to be out in that space and not be disturbed, not hear the groaning of machines, cars, and, and things like that, trucks, and increased traffic. We support a maximum five-year initial interim use permit, but would recommend the city consider a shorter, two- to three-year permit, with the option to extend if the permit conditions are met. We also support the city having very strict conditions in which the action, in which action can be taken quickly if conditions are not met. We support the proposed required hydrology reports and mitigation plans. The water in Quarry Park is what brings the majority of our users there. We recognize that. We don't understand, we've worked with SCSU, we don't understand how the quarries fill, where that water comes from. Is it just groundwater? Is it runoff? You know, getting those reports, I think, is extremely important and having that understanding on the potential effects. We support protecting and studying areas where native wildlife and/or vegetation is of concern or is of potential concern, including requiring EAWs or an EIS if applicable. We support this proposed 1,000-foot setback buffer from Quarry Park's property boundary with the potential for setback reductions after discussions with Stearns County and the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. We're not saying we're completely opposed to mining, we're just asking that, that we have a, that we be considered. In one of the applications that occurred last fall, um, as was mentioned previously, letters get lost. We didn't know anything about the previous one, um, that had occurred. When this one came through, it was on super late notice, and when I went through the application, there was no mention. The park was mentioned in the application one time. They would have come within feet of the boundary of the park. We have a trail that goes through. What if people, what if a person is walking on the park boundary and there's a blasting or there's, you know, explosions that are going? They mentioned that the road needs to be closed down, but the park wouldn't have to be closed down. It's a public area with 100,000-plus visitors. There needs to be some consideration, and that's what we're asking for. I don't know that we're asking for the final say in that decision, but I think we're asking to be just consulted. In addition, the Parks Department and Parks Commission support the city requiring a robust, robust reclamation plan before mining is permitted. But the looming question is why we support the recommended ordinance and amendments? How could mining affect Quarry Park? Impact on natural resources, or resources, excuse me? Noise, dust, sightlines, broken habitat corridors, unknown impacts on water resources are just a few of the items that directly affect the plants and animals. How many people know that there's a native cactus in Minnesota? It thrives in Quarry Park. It thrives on these rock outcrops. There are many other species of concern, um, that are within these areas as well. Please take that into consideration. Noise and hours of operation? People come to Quarry Park, especially the SNA, for serenity and quietness. Dust, if not properly controlled, will negatively affect the air quality for not only park users, but for the plants and animals of the park and SNA. Burms and stockpiles. Burms and stockpiles may change the view of the park visitors. Currently, park visitors see natural landscape, large open oak trees, and open fields. They may have some benefits, too, if the mining were allowed adjacent to the park. Blasting and explosives. I mentioned that a little, little bit earlier. What if a person was walking on one of the trails in the park when the explosives were set off? If roads need to be closed, then there are portions of the park that would most likely also need to be closed. We just want to have those discussions. We greatly appreciate the city allowing us the opportunity to provide feedback for the mining extract, extractive use ordinance. As you know, Quarry Park and Nature Preserve is a tremendous community asset. We believe the proposed amendments, as presented, are a balanced approach to keeping mining an option and also protecting this community treasure. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else like to speak for or against, or comments?
Jim Libesmeyer, 1401 Granite View Road, Farm. Yeah, there's obviously a lot of input tonight. There's a lot of serious decisions to be made, and I think, you know, obviously, the city of Wake Park has a lot weighing on its shoulders. I know there's representation from the county here as well, and I think you just have to attempt to work together. As far as Wake Park goes, you look at the northern boundary, you've got houses that are in the Discovery School area that are basically at the park line, and those people that live there like that, that setting. And some of this might be years out that I may never see, but does Wake Park envision having housing all the way around to the park? Um, I'm not sure if the park even wants to have housing like it has on the north side, you know? Uh, that's where that 1,000-foot buffer comes in. Average city lot is, what, 100 feet by 100 feet, 150 feet by 150 feet? 1,000-foot buffer pushes you out seven to 10 lots from the park line. So, Wake Park, I, I think, I mean, Stearns County, the park, and the city, just like was said earlier, have to work together. Uh, everybody knows there is granite in the ground, and, and I don't know how you can provide services for a street if you have, uh, houses that are on the park line. Uh, a street probably needs, what, 10 feet minimum? And if you're running into granite, you can't hardly service that. So a buffer, in my eyes, would probably diminish Wake Park's opportunity to go down that road in the future, so, um, you know, just things to consider. There's a lot, lot weighing on this, and, and there was some reference of maybe tabling it, and maybe isn't the worst idea in the world to kind of assess the long-term scenario for that. Your city engineer, I don't believe is here, Dave Blummel, uh, I had a conversation with him, uh, several weeks or a month back, and we were discussing something that's relatively close, uh, that would be just across 15 in the old Persian Supper Club area, and they've, you know, cleaned up the piles, and, and there's housing in that area, and it's, uh, very in demand, beautiful, high-end, uh, lots that bring good money, provide good revenue for the city of St. Cloud, and, you know, potentially, um, you know, if done right, uh, you And, you know, potentially, you know, if done right, you could have some very desirable lots. And again, this is probably out in the future quite a ways, but that could provide a good income stream for the City of White Park and, you know, be complimentary to the park as well as the county as well. I mean, their tax revenue comes from property owners, so just kind of, you know, don't make a hasty decision, I guess, you know? It looks like there's been quite a bit of effort put into this, but a thou- 1,000-foot boundary does affect a lot of people in many different ways, so. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anybody else?
One last thing I wanted to say. I forgot to mention Greg Mick again, but on the southern edge of the park, northern edge of our land, there's supposedly supposed to be a belt, a southern beltway going through there, and it would butt right up against the park, not in their land but in ours, so that's supposedly going to happen at some point in time. So they'll have a highway running past there with cars running through and noise and this, so anyone walking on the trail is going to see a car or hear a car, just so you know that that's in the process. To an R section is the first goal when this decides, just something to keep in mind.
Could I just add one more thing? You know, I mentioned stop, take a-
Podium, please, sir? Can you come to the podium, please?
For the people on-
When I was up here, I advocated stopping and taking a deep breath and kind of recoup- would put me in the "let's table this" category. Thank you.
I have property on Granite View Road, and I'm also in the mining business. I'm not as good a speaker as Tom and Ralph by any means, but I do believe that mining can be done and near a park or any other facility without impacting it in a great way, and I think 1,000-foot boundary is unreasonable, and I think that some of the other things in the proposed ordinance are unreasonable, and I would just ask that you take, you know, maybe add another six months to the moratorium, and we can maybe get together as a group and come up with some things that work for everyone, not just one entity, so. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Excuse me, Lori Johnson. Sorry, I'm going to get a call. I'm Office Manager for Johnson Materials. Sorry, it's been a really emotional month for me. Son got married, my mother died, it's been a lot, and now we have this. I would just like all of you and our gentlemen from the parks to realize that mining, being one of the oldest industries in the country, is also one of the most regulated already industries in the country. One of my main jobs that I did for the business is in safety and regulation, and we are already regulated by MSHA, not OSHA. We have our own little department, Mine, Safety, and Health Administration, just for mining, and that's at the federal level, and they come and view the mines at least once every year and check everything that's going on with the machinery, the people, are people wearing their PPE, do we meet all their safety requirements? Then, at the state level, we are governed by, not the DNR, but the MPCA in Minnesota. We are regulated by the DNR in Wisconsin. And through them, we already have to take air quality things into consideration. We have, they have this little lovely equation that at the end of the year, we have to send in how much we crushed of whatever various products, and then they have this little equation that they come up with, and they say, "That created X amount of air pollution from dust." And I'm sorry, but, yeah, dust gets in the air, but it's more of a threat to our employees than it is to anybody else, and so we take precautions for that. We have pe- we do watering with water, not with any chemicals, with water, and we make them wear, you know, protective equipment when necessary. But in reality, it does not go beyond the scope of the parameters of the mine itself. And as we've talked about, there's always burms and trees and things all around mines. If you've been to any mine, they're not like right on the open. The one on Granite View right now is a real exception to the rule. That one is right out there in the open because it's right along Highway 15. But in the norm, you don't even know. You drive by, you go out to, what's the restaurant out there? Anyway, there's, Quarry is all over here, owned, that used to be owned by Bowery Brothers, now Knife River and whatever. You drive by, you wouldn't even know they're there because there is, we do, already do birmingham and all that stuff around there. And then we're also regulated in regards to water, stormwater. Okay? What is stormwater? It's rain and snow melt, okay? And for some reason, they feel that we need to be monitored for that because we could somehow, this is the MPCA, we could somehow pollute surface water from rain and snow water. How? In mining, we use no chemicals. There's absolutely no chemicals used in mining. It is strictly either digging the stuff out of the ground, or in the case of rock, you have to blast it and then crush it and do that kind of stuff. There's no chemicals. There's no way we could pollute anything. And in regards to water, how does it show up in a quarry? Rain and snow melt. It just is there. In granite, there's nowhere for it to go. There's nowhere for it to drain, and a lot of times, we have to pump it out or we'll drown our people. I mean, there's just nowhere for it to go. So, all of this concern that the people at the parks and whatever, we're already regulated to the hilt on all these things, and you just heard what had to happen for the last year. We've had this permit for a year, and we haven't been able to even start mining because of all of these excessive additional regulation steps that we've had to go through to even get to start mining. So I just would like to implore to you that, yes, please, listen to the voice of reason of all these wonderful landowners here. Step back a minute, see that mining is already heavily regulated, but we do want to work with people, we do want to make things as good as possible like we do in any of our other sites, but we want to work together, and we don't want this rammed down our throat and make it absolutely impossible to do business in White Park. Rock is a really big resource. You go to Clearwater or Clear Lake, there's no granite, it's a lot of sand, okay? You go down to southern central Minnesota, there's no granite, it's real good dirt and soil for growing, you know, crops, but no granite. You guys have a tremendous resource here, and by the way, mining is also one of the only industries that not only has to pay sales tax on what they sell to the end user, they have to pay an aggregate tax through the whole state of Minnesota. 10 cents for every ton of material that gets taken out of the ground gets paid to the county that it's from. So right now, if you try to put an absolute moratorium on mining or say that no mining can occur in this area, you are losing a lot of money, okay? So I want you to think about that, too. Thank you.
I just want to interject for a moment. I just want to take a moment to mention to the Johnsons and their operation. This is in no way an indictment of what you've done out there. This is about trying to be more effective with our review process and maybe pump the brakes on future where the city goes with these sorts of requests, but you guys have been great. I just want to put that out there. The one or two times I've had a question or had, you know, something came up, you guys lickety-split, you got me the answers, put it to rest. So I just want to be clear that this is in no way, you know, an attack from me on you as a business, and I think we obviously disagree on proposals and things, but I just want to be clear that not to take it that way.
My name is Sande Fidor, and we live on 2337 Granite View Road. They have been mining on Ted Klein's property for, how long? Over a year?
Three years.
Three years.
Ten what?
I don't, I hardly ever hear anything, any noise, but I sit at my deck, and the traffic on Highway 15 is worse than in the cities. It's just terrible. So if they're proposing that it's going to be very noisy when they do Greg's or our property, it won't be nearly as noisy as the Highway 15. And another thing, I don't think that crushing granite proposes worse consequences to the environment than hauling it out in the trucks with rock.
Anybody else like to make a comment?
Hi, I'm Brian Libesmeyer, 1703 Granite View Road. I'm not a very good speaker. My dad probably was. Thank all of you for your input, and I love the Quarry Park also, but the Quarry Park does have, you know, some police, I think they doubled the police, that they had incidents of theft, and there are some troubles with the park. And with the buffer zone and all that, I think that's a little overkill, but you mentioned all the animals and everything in the Quarry Park. This is a little off-track, but it isn't. What do they eat? They're in our fields, you know, could they make a field in Quarry Park? There's a big open field. I remember where the parties were when I was a kid. Can you guys plant corn and stuff in there? Because all the neighboring farms are 30 rows of corn with no cob on it, and we asked the DNR for reimbursement, and they said no, if I heard right. So it's wonderful that the animals are in there, but what are they eating? Because we might need a GoFundMe account for our crops. So I personally want my defense around the park as it was, someone had mentioned. People walk out of the field, they're in the field. My son has a trail cam up, there's people in the field, they have someone in front of the trail cam out in the field. You know, there are issues with the park, possibly poaching, things of that nature. The park is wonderful, but there are some downfalls. So water runoff. Our property has a water runoff assessment, Marlin and Esther Libesmeyer and a few other people. We've had that for many years. It's like $250,000 to $350,000 for when it rains, and now we're going to have a buffer zone, and it just seems like, what's next? And the water runoff, we haven't even done anything. I mean, it seems like the carriage is in front of the horses on some of these issues. But again, everybody did a wonderful job. I can't speak that well, so I thought I'd enlighten it with a little dear humor, but, you know, what they will do with the park and the animals and everything, that's wonderful. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else like a chance to make a comment?
Larry Klein, 367, excuse me, 3670 Plum Creek Drive, St. Cloud. One of the partners of the MTL site, which is currently being mined by Johnson Materials, and just want to let Jeff know, he's doing a great job on site. He's been, always been punctual, and any questions come up, he's on top of it, so. Couple of questions that came up on the statement here. One was the issues of scientific natural area. Where is it and where's the limits? No one knows. So how do you determine the DNR standards of setbacks? So there's a major review that needs to be understood. The other item was the setback against residentials of 750 feet. You've got a lot of residentials that are out there right now that are adjacent to each other, and if you take 750 feet off of one side or the other side, you're limiting anybody to do what they wanted to do with their property. You're basically forcing them to not even have any chance to mine anything out of there. So setbacks are way too restrictive. The other item that comes in hand is, we really didn't see come forward at this point, was we have an existing permit in place, and how does this relate to the existing permits that are intact? And if we come to a renewal process, where does it, the renewal process go to? Does it follow the old permit standards or does it move to the new standards? So it's kind of an open, understood area. Thank you.
Anybody else like to make a comment?
My move, we close the public hearing.
Seconded.
Motion and second to close the public hearing. All in favor, simply saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearing closed at 7:56.
Council, or, excuse me, getting crossed up already. Planning Commission members, just given, and you're welcome to debate or discuss this, but I think it's pretty clear we've got a lot of interest, you know, here tonight, particularly on one or two aspects. I didn't hear too much concern about, you know, a good chunk of what's being proposed, but, you know, the setback issues with the proposed buffer and maybe the setbacks that were being proposed for adjustment are obviously points of contention. So you're welcome to discuss, but what I would suggest, given the interest and the comments we've heard tonight, is from staff's perspective, I would propose withdrawing this at this time, and kind of going back to the drawing board a little bit, seek a extension with the council of the moratorium for a little more time, try and better communicate with some of the parties involved and see if we can't come back with something perhaps more amenable and palatable to all parties. Can't say everybody's going to be thrilled and clapping hands, but, you know, maybe there's some options here.
And I definitely concur with that. I think enough interest has been brought up that we have to take a more serious look at it, and I think we have to get involved, not only the Planning Commission, council, these people, and I think I would like to have the County Park Board, I mean, the County Park people, and the DNR involved to hear some of this stuff because they need to know, and they need to give us some answers, too, because I think we're following these guidelines and pushing these ones in the face, and I think we do have to do some-
Yeah.
-a lot more research.
Part of the issue from my perspective is, you know, I get it from both sides, you know, at the staff level. I sign up on a permit, and then X number of months later, I get contacted by an agency, and where's this, where's this, where's this? Well, we don't have it, it's not a part of our application requirement. It may be at the state level, but we didn't address it or at least review it on our side. My tenure isn't to make it more onerous on applicants. It's, I know that they have a lot of things that they work through, but I would like to see some of the same detail that they share with other agencies at our level so we can make a better informed decision, especially when there's sensitive areas that may or may not be involved, you know? I don't, in some cases, I didn't hear- I don't, in some cases, I didn't hear that until after the fact and all of a sudden, it's a crisis because, you know, somebody didn't get the notice until too late. We've learned, we're working through some of those things, you know, making sure the right people here at the right times. So, but I do think there's room for some improvement, given the comments we're hearing and even the comments that you have in those documents in front of you. Now, I, this was a stab at it, I, you know, I thought long and hard about this. This wasn't a year spent twiddling my thumbs. You know, I wanted to propose something I thought was kind of middle ground and, you know, find some balance between folks that live out there and folks that have an interest in maybe doing this. And maybe I didn't hit that nail close enough on the head, so I'm willing to go back.
From what I'm, from what I'm hearing, it sounds to me like the extension of the moratorium would probably be the best bet rather than tabling it because I think we need more time than that.
Yeah, that's, that would be my thought. Our city attorney's walking away in, but tabling it basically commits us to acting within a certain timeframe. It's, it would be probably cleaner and smoother to withdraw and then we just re-notice and come back when ready.
I think, I think this was kind of put together because we were reaching the end of the one-year moratorium. And I think extending that would give it time and actively work on it to come up with a...
Yeah, we do have an option to extend that a little bit. It wouldn't be for another year. We have an option to extend for a couple of months, just given that there's some regulatory aspects that are being...
I think it would give us more leeway.
Yeah, but we, from here on out, it would be moving faster than the past months. There's no doubt about that.
Is it possible to set up some public input meetings like we had with the other, when we did our comprehensive plan and that? We had meetings downstairs where people come and discuss stuff.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly look at that. And I would encourage anybody here tonight that's interested, make sure you leave your contact information on the sheet over there by the giant jar of sanitizer. You're welcome to use that, too. We have loads of it. Leave your contact and if there's interest, maybe note that and, well, we'll consult on our end. My intent wasn't to obfuscate or try and be sneaky with this. I was, I was basically proposing things based off my experience in the past couple of years. That's the best I had and I didn't, maybe I didn't look at it enough from the viewpoints of the property owners, so for that.
John, I have to say, actually, when I was reading all of these proposals and these changes, a number of them jumped out at me as, well, why wasn't it this way before? It wasn't like, to me, there didn't seem to be anything that was too radical, especially when I compare what they're doing on a county and state level. So, I understand, yeah, we can tweak a few things a little bit here and there, but no, I think you're absolutely on the right path. Time marches on and we have to address this. And, you know, if it becomes a little more, we've got more regulation, so be it. It's the way it is.
Yeah, and I think, you know, some of it, I honestly don't know what the applicants go through when they get to, you know, the DNR or the MPCA or those other, you know, alphabet agencies, we call them. So, I don't know all that information, you know, and I think, I just want to try to align our requirements with those so they talk to each other a little more. It doesn't have to be that you have to have necessarily all that information coming in at the same time because that might be handled later. But I want to have a better idea that, you know, when the same lady that came to some of these last meetings comes and she's worried about her well, I want to have a better response to that because that's a concern. I think that's fair and they probably get that detail at some point later on. But, you know, I'd like to be able to share that more, more in form instead of just saying, well, it's with a de-watering permit, good luck. You know, I hope it doesn't go dry on you.
Heard a lot of input and I think setback and that, if I've got a piece of property and have to build something, I have to provide the setback on my property. The park may have to do that, some of that, too. So, we've got to look at both sides.
Well, and there might be some points of discussion, you know, as far as focusing on berming or buffer screening or other ways on the park, you know, I think, obviously, there would be a preference at a staff level, but if there's not the, if there's not the pull or traction for that, you know, we'll discuss other options with the park as far as noticing and giving them more consideration because they, you know, and that's my fault because I probably didn't give them enough consideration on the last ones. You know, I just, I know they're big and they're there, but I don't think that there's, it didn't register with me that there's people that are within, you know, a fairly close distance perhaps when, when some way may be doing a blast. Not that they're blasting all day, every day, it's not that frequent. And it's not like TV or it's a, you know, a mushroom cloud and a plume of smoke, you know, they're a lot more controlled than that. But something where there's, where, again, where those hands are talking to each other and we have them on a list to be noticed and that there's some additional considerations there, you know, ultimate if there's a buffer or not or somewhere in between.
It seems like the ball has been dropped between agencies in the past and that shouldn't be. I mean, everybody that, all the agencies that need to be in the loop should be and, you know, there should be a process that keeps them all in the loop, yes.
And at least now, we've got a line of communication that we didn't have before. Now, between...
We've got the DNR.
Between the DNR, we've got, we've got the point people, we've got Ben at Parks, you know, we know who to get to for what, that it lands, that if something goes out, it lands with the right person, it doesn't wind up in the mystery letter pile that gets opened by an intern and put who knows where. We get the same thing here. We all have different requirements to send each other things and, you know, depending on the day, you don't necessarily know who it's going to land with when it goes to the same general address. I mean, I'm sure Stearns County Courthouse gets 1,000 pieces of mail a day for different stuff. It's hard to sift through for the ones that matter.
You got a comment, Jeff?
I would just like to say that I was on a moratorium committee in another, for another site, another township that we have a gravel pit in. And it's a, it's a process to go through these things and come to agreements on things. So, I guess I would ask that you consider a six-month extension to the moratorium because you really can't cover that much ground in one or two meetings to, you know, come to agreements on things. I just think it takes at least a six-month timeframe to possibly, you know, cover all of these topics.
We would shoot for as long as we can, but we may be bound by state allowances, you know, because we're already kind of at the tail end of our initial one.
Okay, all right.
And part of it, well, part of it was just timing on my end that we just didn't, this ended up taking longer. But I can promise you, if you didn't like the discussion or my proposals tonight, you really wouldn't have liked them a few months ago. I can say that much.
Well, as far as city attorney, best thing is to do an extension or...
So, given the comments that have come in and the clearly strong feelings that are there, I think that the concept of withdrawing this and extending the moratorium will certainly make sense. I just note that for the moratorium to be extended, the city council has to have a vote to approve it. And the city council, if they don't do that, what essentially happens is the pre-existing ordinance just comes back online. As the ordinance that exists is the operational ordinance. And because we've done this to study whether or not we need to make amendments to the ordinance, if they still feel that it is appropriate to consider adjustments to the ordinance, then that would be a reason why a moratorium would be extended. If the opinion of the city council ultimately comes down as, for whatever reasons, right, that we don't think that a moratorium makes, we being council. If the council thinks that a moratorium doesn't make sense, then the currently existing ordinance essentially just becomes, it never went away, but that we would have the paws come off and that's the structure that we'd operate under. The council meeting is the 26th, is that right?
That's correct, but the, that would be the next council meeting, but depending on the timing to, with statute, to look at the extension of the moratorium, that could be a little bit later date, we have to kind of look at that.
Right.
Because with those, it has to fall in a certain sequence of times that it can't be within before this or after that. So, it may not be the 26th depending. But it has to be, there has to be a public posting, there has to be a public hearing for it.
I'm kind of putting a couple of cards out on the table, if we're playing poker, to say that currently, there's nothing on the 26th agenda, other than whether or not they're going to consider this ordinance. There would need to be something in the 26th meeting suggesting that we need to revisit the issue and that we might be looking at an additional meeting put on the calendar to allow for a vote on the moratorium. I'm, much like John was doing, I'm kind of giving a little bit of additional information for the benefit of the public so that nobody is confused or surprised if they were to attend the 26th meeting and wonder why there's no discussion or that the discussion seems different from what we're doing here today and the direction that I believe that the commission is starting to turn to. But that would mean that potentially there'd be an additional meeting that's put on the calendar, which would provide the opportunity for them to vote on whether or not to extend the moratorium. Under the statute, they can extend the moratorium, but they are limited based upon what the, what the options are within the statute. They can effectively put it out for 120 days and then they would have to revisit the issue. There's ultimately a cap of 18 months. We've used 12 by having the one-year moratorium. So, in theory, there's six months available, but a whole cloth award of six months, I don't believe that they would be able to do that. They'd be able to do 120 and then they could kind of revisit the issue within the realm. If there's something that they can't accomplish in that timeframe, that would be a basis upon which they could put on some additional time.
Do you... Beyond emotional? I would move that we withdraw the present amendments to this ordinance and pursue lengthening the moratorium.
Second that motion.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Yep, and for anybody that is, wants to be part of the discussion, please leave your contact information. If nothing else, you know, keep an eye to the newspaper. There'll be, when this comes back around for another meeting like this, it gets posted. So, just watch your paper and thank you all for your input. I know, I appreciate it. I know, you know, I don't take it personally. I'd rather have a discussion like this and we come up with something better in the end. It's not always easy having these conversations and, you know, it's part of the process. So, I appreciate your input tonight and the time you took to come.
Yes, thank everybody for coming.
Thank you.
I move we adjourn.
We have a second?
I second.
We've got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, 8:12.